.............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................. ...[4.51]
Different world that I'm living right now. I have a business in Rochester. And if I could be home a little bit more with my son and other people over there, it'd make my life a little bit easier.
Group home would be okay?
No, no group home. I've got enough, I've got enough things going on.
I guess the only other thought I have is, right now, is that your property does have a slope to it from west to east, but not a lot of slope. It's not steep, at least according to the...
Yeah, it's not steep. It's not drastically steep, okay? When it comes, you know, because I'm in the construction business, so when it comes down to it, it's just that I'd have to take out so many trees if I ended up doing, you know, with, with the house.
Yeah, I, what I gather is that you placed this here to avoid having to knock down any trees. I got here today, took that exact building and picked it up and turned it 90 degrees. So the long dimension is east-west instead of north-south. The entire building would not be in your front yard.
But I, but I have those power lines to the south.
Okay, so they don't show on us.
Right. Yeah, the power lines...
To the south. It would, it would move the building farther away from those. If you, for example, if you took the northeast corner of the building and left it where it is, and just picked up the whole building and turned it 90 degrees, counterclockwise, put it back down again. You'd move it away from the power lines, farther away, and it would be, it's partly behind your...
I got, I got, what has happened with that is I probably have 40-foot spurs or newer waste in front. And I got good ones on the side. But, good suggestion.
Okay, yeah, for now, that's, that's all I got.
And I have a question. What specifically is the building going to be used for?
The building would be used for, number one, somewhere to, for these kids to end up going. Somewhere to, you know, tinker, tinker out there once in a while with the, with the kids, myself, my son. That's really, that's really what I'm asking for. I mean, it's just, when it comes down to a, a big pole barn garage, when it comes down to it, that's what I'm doing it for the use of for. You know, we might later, at a later date, end up putting a, you know, a, the car in there to work on, things like that. Just, I just don't have enough room in my garage to do that right now because I'm just jammed. So when it comes down to it, that's what I'm looking for. We're not going to play a baseball game in there.
Yeah, I thought some more had written in some of the comments that it was going to be used for physical therapy and...
Well, it can, it can be used for that too, when it, when it comes out. My son, he's got cerebral palsy to work with. And it's not that we do a lot of that, but it's somewhere else to go. And with, with, with the, and where, where it's looking like, if it didn't go with the beast that we're living out there now with this COVID and this Delta and things like that, I don't, I can't bring kids in my home, you know what I mean? So if we had outside source of that, we could, we could find that a little better than we could in the house. You know, we, you know, when it comes down to having bonfires and things like that at the house, we had several of those up until, that was last fall with the kids. And, you know, a lot of kids, a lot of kids that I've, I lived in Rochester for eighteen years and was a homeowner in Rochester, and, you know, everything's just real tight. That's why we moved out this way. So when, when it goes out there, they think that they're at a state park when it comes down to it because they're not side by side of a lot of homes where they live. And when you see the smiles on your face, that's why I'm going for it.
And do you have any questions?
No questions right now.
Lawrence, do you have any questions at the African?
Did you consult with our building official about location or did he offer you any advice or did you ask for any?
What I ended up doing was I, I asked and I drew, excuse me, I ended up drawing, drawing several different planes. And, you know, came in and sort of explained and he guided us, guided me as best as he could. And then I was, ended up telling him, but nobody ever came up to the house. Everything was, you know, not so much talk. It was email. I talked, I came into the clerk's office. And I, Joe wasn't, what was his name? Was head of, was it Don? Anyways, I was with, Jamie was his secretary back there. So we went back and forth and we were talking about the different things that what we could do and things like that. And when he ended up guiding me, he said the only way that we could do anything is by all the barriers through what I'm putting on that side. We got a good piece of property. I just don't need a road or a driveway that goes from the street all the way back that's going to be, you know, two to 300 yards in that corner because it'd be, it'd be way too tough for these kids to end up with.
Okay. Well, the reason I ask is because you say nobody came out to look at. That, that process only comes after you file your application here because we don't come out before the situation. We come out after the situation is asked for.
Okay.
So if there's going to be some inspection of the property and some booking over, it'll take place now that you have applied.
Okay.
That's all I have to ask right now.
You've mentioned having some, the kids over. How many children will there be there?
I mean, it's not, it's, it's sort of an open thing. I mean, there's, you can get five to 10 kids every other week. And they sign up for different things and, but just somewhere to go, you know, somewhere to go. And I needed another structure, like I said, because my, my home was too small. As a garage size. And, and when it comes down to, that's one of the reasons why we ended up moving out, out here is because we thought we could put a structure where we wanted. But as, as I know, by going through this, I should have assumed. That's why I'm here today to see what we can do to try to make this work.
Can you imagine or build that structure anyplace else on the property?
Pardon me?
Is there, can you imagine or build that structure, the pole barn, on a different place on your property that would conform to the ordinance and all?
No, the only thing is on the, on the north side in between my neighbor Gary and Don, the next door, that's where my septic field is. So wherever, you know, when it comes down to it, I would have to say tight to that property, maybe that's important. If I came into my property, like if you came up my driveway, if you looked at the right inside, I would have to either swoop, build a driveway coming from the road and take it down, all the way down the tree line to the back and put it in the back. But it's, it's, I think it'd be too far for the, for the kids. I think it'd be, end up turning into a fiasco versus where there's a circle driveway in front of the house. It'd be an easy drop-off and I wouldn't have to worry about that.
All right. Phil, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. What is on the property between your well and the property line?
Between the well and the property line, I got power lines coming in and I got... Okay, the corner of my house is here. My wall's here. My, my wall comes off the corner of my garage in probably 20 yards, okay? So if I go from my well to my property, the property line that's to the south of it, I have, I got power lines going that way. But in between that well and there is 10 trees, okay?
Looking at your, the print here that I have, the reason I ask that question is turn the barn 90 degrees and put it in line with the garage.
You have a big slope coming down. And if I build on up, build on that type, the way that slope comes from the garage, it comes down in my, the well, my well's here, everything gradually goes down, okay? If I took it 90 degrees and ended up putting that, that way, number one, I don't think it's going to, going to look right. And number two is I'm going to take all those trees out. And by, by putting this barn, where I wanted to put it, is blocked from the road. This, I don't think it'd be an eyesore. And if I wanted to do it, I'm going to do it right. And then I gotta be where the power lines come back, where the power lines run through the property from the power lines to the corner of my property. Power lines run east and west and to the south of me is 30 yards. You have a 30, you have a, no, a 25 yards. But I gotta have, I end up, I got easement, a 15-foot easement from those power lines. So that's by, I, I wanted to go for like a 40 by 60, but I couldn't do it because they have to have easement in there if they got to trim trees, they got to do something with the power lines. I couldn't do it. So I was thinking about taking the barn to the back of the power lines being 15 feet from the power lines, moving it up and that's, that's the whole scenario. It's a nice piece of property, big piece of property, but it's, you got, you have your chosen points you can put in. That's, that's what I think. But when it comes down to that recommendation, without seeing an aerial shot on there, if you didn't see the trees, that would be an idea. So I do appreciate the input on that, but it's just taking up too many trees, you know?
You know, that way you wouldn't have to be, you'd be behind the house, so...
Yeah. And, you know, if, if, if it gets knocked down, I'll, I'll look at something else. But I'm trying to explain as best as I can with the situation I have to try to make this work.
We're having other questions or comments or?
As Mr. Smith explained, I at least will be coming out to look at the property between now and the next meeting. Can you put stakes where the corners?
Most definitely, most definitely. I had them in there, but we had a, a new builder retrieve it and he thought it was like a pinball machine. So I had to take them out, but it was, it was a great entertainment factor. If you also could be, if you could pull up.
Anything else? This is also, the purpose of this meeting is for a public hearing for input from the public on this. So, and I'd like to open the hearing to public comments at, what, what time is it? 6:22. Is there anybody from the public that would like to make comments on this application?
I'm the neighbor right now.
Could you identify yourself, please?
Gary James. We're on the north side of his property. And we see no problem with what he wants to do. I'm here to support him.
Anybody else? No one else from the public being present to make comment?
Can I say one more thing?
Just one second. So I'd like to close the public hearing then at 6:22 and so, go ahead.
Yeah, what I ended up doing was with the neighbors that I have around me, when I came on in and I, I talked to Jamie and she ended up begging me a little bit and she asked me if I would get letters from any of my neighbors, okay? So I got a letter from Gary that's to the north. I got another letter from the guy across the street that is to my west. And I got another letter from my neighbor that's to my south. And I told, told, you know, explained what I wanted to do. And they thought, you know, it was a good idea. And they all submitted letters. And we, those words was sent to the building department. So there is letters for that. So that's the surrounding. Even like I know, I know all my neighbors are around. I don't know what's beyond, okay? So, you know, I would knock on doors and introduce myself when I moved in the neighborhood after a couple of months of, of doing this, this is what we wanted to do. And it's been since September of, of last year that we've been going back and forth trying to get a hearing like this. And I'm glad that we finally got into at least be able to talk about it instead of the waiting faster. So whatever we can do to, you know, see what we can do, I appreciate you guys' effort.
All right, our, our, now that the public hearing is closed, we'll, we're, we'll be meeting back here on the application next month, I guess. What is that, September 9th?
Okay.
And to make a decision. And just as a reminder, you know, the decision will be made on the, based on the record and, and other letters and any other comments that come in in the meantime, so, okay?
That come, excuse me, does that come back to another meeting, September the 9th?
Yes, that's where we make our decision.
Okay, and that's, that's just you guys on council, correct?
Correct.
So when it comes down to coming out to my place to look at that, would it be yourself, Tony? Or would there be a few others?
Yeah, we're, we're not allowed to come out as a group. It has to be one at a time.
Yeah.
We'd be coming out as individuals.
Do you want us to?
We'd be coming out as individuals.
Okay. It's a court of Michigan law that we can't come out as a group. That'd be too easy.
Do you want us to call ahead of time or anything?
You know, if you gave me a call, it'd be appreciated because there's a lot of times I'm at work and I have my son and my daughter at home. And, you know, there, there was a couple of people that parked in the neighbor's area. I don't know if, who it was or what. And walked onto the property. My daughter let them out and let the dogs out. And my daughter just said, "Excuse me, who is this?" And they said, "We're from Addison Township." So I don't know who it was.
Right.
So, with it.
Yeah, that was me.
Okay, okay.
After we got the package last month, I happened to have been out on that street. Who's somebody else and stopped just to take a look.
Yeah, I mean...
As, as, as Lawrence, we normally wait till the first meeting when I was driving down the street, so...
Yeah, that's cool.
Stop to take a look.
Yeah, it's just when people are walking around, when it comes down to one thing, one thing I did, I did do while we went out there. I took my daughter to the garage, she put it in bed.
Yeah.
What happened was through all this, I said, "You know, in this day and age with the boating and everything, we're going to go get a good seal." And she's a little cowboy, she's been traveling with a lot of horses. So I said, "Besides having cowboy boots and spurs, you've got to be able to fire in front of the dogs in the back forty-four." And she said, "Yeah, I can probably get it." So Jake, I'm glad that everything all went off right.
Yeah, I'm a small target.
There are no bullet holes in it, that's good.
I'm a small target, you did it.
Yeah, but if you guys have my cell number.
Yeah, to the application, yeah.
If anybody comes out, you know, give me a day, a day heads on out. Or even that morning or something. And if I'm not there, at least I can break and let my daughter be aware of who's coming over.
All right, so that concludes our public hearing. We can move on to the next agenda item unless there's something else. All right, okay, thank you.
We're good. Thank you for taking the opportunity to listen to what I have to do and, and we'll see what happens on September the 9th. I think about it a little bit stronger than what, what you guys can and whatever you can. I appreciate you.
Okay, good, great.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next time you break a sucker, bring one for me, like, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so our next agenda item is election of officers, chair, vice chair and secretary.
Is there any way I could make a request that we just keep it exactly the way it is since it seems to be working so well?
Well, you certainly can make a motion.
I want to put that as a motion.
Yeah, you put that, make, make that motion, that's okay.
I want to put that in motion that we leave it exactly the way it is because it seems to be working well.
I'll second that.
All right, I, I'll call for a roll call vote on Ed's motion.
Well, should we say out loud who those people in positions are? Just have it on the record?
That would be Tony Spina as, oh, wait.
I'm secretary, believe it or not.
Oh, okay, I'd like to make a motion to have the chair as Bob DeWitt, vice chair Lawrence Smith and Tony Spina as our secretary.
I'm taking it.
Okay. We have a roll call vote on the motion, please?
Jay Sandler?
Yes.
Tony Spina?
Yes.
Vice chair Smith?
Yes.
Ed Ringfield?
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes. Okay, motion passes. All right, the next agenda item would be the public forum where the public can make comments to the board and we can listen and not have to take any action on it. Anybody present for the public forum? Seeing nobody or no one's coming forward, we'll conclude that.
Could I, could I speak as a public?
Sure.
Kevin's gone now and he alluded to his wife past five months ago. I have never in my life met or heard of a hero in my life before I talked to him about his wife. She gave her life in the COVID. She's a nurse at Beaumont and taking care of COVID victims and patients, and she contracted COVID herself. Before that, I think it was a kidney that she was a match with her dad. Her dad had to have a kidney and she volunteered to go to the hospital and get a kidney, give her kidney to her dad. That lady is something else. The more, more I listened to Kevin talking about his wife, the more compassion I felt for him. It was, he's in a tough situation, not only with his son, but what he's going through right now. And I think he handled himself extremely well tonight considering what all he's going through. He's a instant single dad for a seriously physically handicapped son. And that's got to be very, very tough. And I told him, I said, "I really appreciate what he's doing right now."
Where did you meet him then? Right here tonight?
I called him and what I did is I went on Google Earth so I could see his place as better than this thing. And when I called him, I was doing an aerial view while I was on the phone with him, asking him questions like, "I see you've got trees right here. Why can't you move the tree?" I think, Tony, your suggestion is right on. And as a matter of fact, I asked him that and he said, "If push comes to shove, yes, he would consider moving it there." But he figures, since he's in the landscaping, it might cost him around seven grand to do all the fill and do all of this. But he said, "Before you guys shoot me down, I would consider doing that." And then when you suggested, and, and Phil suggested shifting it and spinning it around, that's not a bad idea. Okay? And, and it's something that he will not, "I'm not going to do this." He even thought about that. But the, the ground drops off. It's really hard, but he'd have to bring in a lot of fill. But I just wanted to let you know, this guy has gone through a tough 2021, a real tough one. And I think he handled himself extremely well tonight, very poised. And that's all I, I just wanted to let you guys know that just five months ago, his wife passed away.
Yeah.
And the thing is, when this all started, his wife came to the township and met Lisa. She met you, right, Lisa? And met the girl. So she was...
Yeah, I met, I met the daughter just briefly.
Yeah, I mean, his wife, when she came in, she met Lisa and they talked about the son and everything. And what a blow when she comes up and Kevin comes up and says, "My wife died," like, what? I mean, it's, we're right in the middle of this thing. And it was just like, it caught the township off guard when this happened. And that's all I wanted to say. If you guys didn't know any of the background, there's a lot of stuff that Patricia was trying to get done. And it kind of like, I wanted to say it's not for her, but it's kind of like a memorial for her because that is, this is one thing she wanted.
Yeah. What did you see, Jake?
What's that?
What did you see? Just real quick.
Well, I saw a layout of a house that is fairly secluded from the road. You can see the house, the road, but it's got a, along the road, it's got some, a row of very tall pine trees. It's, you know, sets back off the road up 100 feet. I agreed with the comments that you both made, that there's room to rotate it around and push it back a little bit. There's a lot of trees in that area, but they're, they're not, it's not like big oak trees. Most of them are pine trees. So, you know, you'd have to take a few trees down to move. It wouldn't be a disaster. The, the grading isn't that severe. It's more of a rolling hill. I think it drops off maybe seven or eight feet to the corner of it. There was, there's definitely room to the, to the east side of the house to do that. I was, I didn't see the well, but again, I was on there for a few minutes. I had driven by, but really was just trying to get a, a look for where is this, where in the township is this place located? And tending to go back out there, you know, to really, to look around, you know, a lot, lot more depth. But, but there's plenty of room out there. There's a lot more room than, than, than I think it appears from, from the discussions so far. Wouldn't you like to see it? So I, I think, I think that's definitely a possibility. Either way, I don't think visually it's going to look very different though. He's in a kind of a corner and I don't know that you, you really see it very differently.
Except it would conform.
Except, yeah.
Yeah.
If it was twisted around, it would conform to the arm.
It would conform.
Yes.
Correct.
I wonder if anybody explained to him that the cost is no object to be considered by this board?
I didn't say anything to him about it.
No, I know you didn't. I just wondered if somebody in the office might say, is that, is that true, Tony?
That's absolutely true.
Yeah.
And in general, our decision is supposed to be based on special characteristics of the land.
Of the earth.
And they're really, in this particular case, without having gone any farther than we have right now, there are no special things about this piece of land. What's special is the needs of his son. I don't know how much that should, it's going to sound terrible, but how much that should matter? And that's not what we're here for. But it could be. So I, I don't know.
Yeah. He did mention that there's a possibility, which I did not anticipate him saying, that he would be using it also as a garage.
Yep.
And when he said that, that would be non-conforming unless he puts it equal or behind the house.
Well, I guess once the barn is in place.
Yeah.
And you want to work on a car in there. I mean, it's not a commercial position. It's just, you know, lots of people have old Chevys that they work on and stuff.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, unusual situation. Very unusual. Yeah, it is. But Tony's right. Tony's absolutely right. We got to look at this as the ground, the earth, the house. Here's a scenario. Let's say we give it to him. Everything's fine, but he would do better in Florida. Next year, he decides to move to Florida. We just approved a house with a non-conforming building to the next resident. And again, it goes to the land, but we've got to not show compassion to people and we've got to look at it, how it fits with the land.
Well, I don't know if we are not to show compassion to people. I don't know that.
Yeah.
That'll be one of the things we think about.
Yeah, unfortunately, there's, you know, our standards are what they are and they don't always fit other people's agendas. So, something we all have to think about. So, okay. So the next order of business would be correspondence received by the board. Is there any correspondence anybody's received that I want to bring to their attention? Next would be the zoning board reports. I have nothing. Anybody else?
I don't, oh.
Your planning commission liaison, Lawrence?
Nope, I have, nothing on the agenda right now until a cleanup.
And the next thing would be motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Anybody who's going to support?
I'll support.
I'll go support. What, excuse me, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Hearing none. Motion passes. See ya, see you next month.